Good to hear you.
He's seen, there we go.
Okay.
All right, welcome back from our lunch break. We're going to go ahead and move on to our next item, our 6.8, consideration of resolution appointing road commissioner for the County of Lake. And we have interim public works director Lars Ewing here.
All right, good afternoon Lars Ewing. I did not actually put this item forward, so I think to maybe briefly explain it. Streets and highways code does require your board to appoint a road commissioner, and that's why we're here. So Susan, if there's more.
That's all I have. He's the best person for it, given the fact that he is an engineer, and he is taking over operations.
All right, any questions from the board? Open it up to the public for comment. I don't see any public comments, so I'll bring it back to the board.
I offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered.
I second. Aye.
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 Yes.
Yes. All right, resolution has passed 5:00.
7.8 please.
All right, consideration of agreement for construction management services for the 2024 pavement rehabilitation project with GHD with an amount not to exceed $634,478, and authorized the chair to sign, Public Works.
All right, good afternoon Lars Ewing, interim public works director. Your board is likely aware that the project to rehabilitate or reconstruct or repair about 16 miles of road up in Cobb is currently underway. Contractor is Argonaut Constructors. Your board previously awarded that contract. For construction projects, your board is probably also familiar with the fact that they do require a lot of oversight. It's not simply hand it over to the contractor and let them go. There's construction management, construction inspection, in some cases, materials testing that's required. That's certainly the case in this project. Prior to, well, prior to me being here, work began. Work began on, I believe it was June 2nd, and that work included Argonaut Constructors doing the work, but it also included GHD performing construction management, construction inspection, and materials testing services with some sub consultants. They had done that work under the assumption, the belief that this item would be taken to your board in a previous date. Given the circumstances that have passed, we're here now with hopes that you'll consider a retroactive approval of this. So not only approval of the contract, but retroactive to June 1st. Reasons behind that were, it certainly predated me, but I have had conversations with the project manager at GHD. They moved ahead in good faith that there would be an agreement. They have been performing the work, and it's actually well ahead of schedule. While we're about 20% of the way through the project on a time basis, on the working days that were assigned, they're about 60% of the way done with the project. The reason I really bring that up is that the cost that you're considering for this contract of $634,000 and change is likely to be hundreds of thousands of dollars less for a couple of reasons. One, the contractor is moving quickly, so the construction management crew does not have to be up there as long. But number two, where historically, the engineering and inspection division of Public Works has done a lot of onsite work, that has not been the case lately. I'm going to attempt to get some of our staff out there, the engineers and engineering technicians, to do some of the work. So there will be some cost savings there. I think long term, there's a huge benefit to the county to do that. In particular, for a project like this that is funded through SB1 funds, which are essentially local. We have the opportunity to use those funds at largest discretion, as opposed to a grant-funded project that comes from state, excuse me, federal DOT or from Caltrans. So in particular, for a project like this, there's a huge benefit in preserving the funds, not only because we can use the money elsewhere, but it really helps develop staff to be in the field and only serves to benefit us in the future. So have had conversations with GHD, and we do anticipate it to be quite a bit less than the contract that you're considering. But given the nature of what has transpired, we are asking for a retroactive approval of that as well.
All right, Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll try to be brief, and Director Ewing, thank you very much for having a discussion with me regarding this yesterday. I hope that we don't have to see something like this again in the near future. If it's services that we cannot provide in-house, then that's a different story. When I first read this, I saw a lot of stuff that I think that we can do in-house, and I'm happy to hear that you are looking to transfer some of that onto our employees rather than using the consultant for those things to hence decrease the total cost. I also don't like the timeline where we're saying yes to something without really the ability to say no when the services are pretty much done and said for. But I just, this made me really unhappy to see when we're trying to stretch every dollar we have for roads, and we're spending that much more on something that can be done in-house. So, thank you for bringing it. It has to be done. I'm going to say yes today because I feel I have no other choice, but I needed to make the statement that I want to see our people working, not us spending money on others in ways that does not stretch our dollars in the right ways.
All right, open it up for public comment. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Owen? Aye.
Is this a resolution?
No.
It's an agreement.
It's okay.
Oh, I thought it was too. Okay.
Oh, the previous one, okay. I move that we approve the agreement.
I second that.
And just for added clarification, this is the agreement for construction management services?
It is, correct.
For the 2024 pavement rehabilitation project with an amount not to exceed an amount of $634,478, within an effective retroactive date to June 1, 2025, and authorized the chair to sign.
I move.
All right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5:00. Thank you Lars.
Thank you.
6.10.
All right, 6.10. It looks like we're going to, oh my goodness. Yeah, it looks like we're going to, I'll read it off. Consideration of a report from Municipal Resource Group on your boards, March 21st, 2025, Training Workshop on General Governance, Priority Development and Organizational Effectiveness. Susan?
Yes, thank you Chair. We respectfully ask that this item be moved to July 22nd.
All right. Supervisor, you're good? You have your pen up? Okay. All right, I'll open it up for the public. Comment? All right, hearing nothing. Do we got to do a specific date or just table till further noticed?
July 22nd.
Oh, I heard you. I'm sorry. All right, so this will be taken up July 22nd. All right.
7.2.
7.2, consideration of Board of Supervisors Rules of Procedure, General Protocol, and Committee's Policy Date.
Thank you Chair. We respectfully also ask this item be moved to a future date to be determined.
All right, Supervisor Sabatier?
Just wanted to offer another option. I don't know how much feedback you received from this board. I know that I sent quite a laundry list of potential changes or at least discussion points. Wondering if it's possible to look at putting together a short-term ad hoc committee to review those things and then bring it back to us, rather than, this is a very long document, and I know that the process anticipated today was to kind of go page by page, but I think that would take a very, very long time. And I would, in my opinion, trust for the chair and vice chair, if that's what the ad hoc committee would be, to work with staff to come back with a more completed document after all the feedback is received.
You're going to volunteer other supervisors to do it?
That chair can.
Is anyone willing to entertain that, or do we just bring it back? Yeah, you're good with it?
I don't mind doing it.
Yeah, he can do it?
Yeah.
Or, but I don't have to.
No, we're fine. You said you agree with it or you will do it?
Both.
It don't matter, I thought.
But if Vice Chair wants to do it?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
All right, so.
So just to confirm, who's going to do it?
I think it could be two.
Yeah.
Oh, both.
Myself and Brad.
Yeah, yes, Chair and myself.
Okay. All right, so what do we have to do in order, Lloyd?
So the formation of an ad hoc committee could be initiated or effectuated by chair directive or by motion. So I take it that this would be by chair directive?
Yes.
Will there be any other, just for the record, aside from the two members of the board, would there be any other members of this ad hoc committee?
It looks like we would have to have staff, of course, yeah.
And then also that takes care of that issue. As far as the item itself, still no motion needed for that, if it's still going to be pulled for a later date. And then just public comment on what was discussed.
So with that, I'll open it up for public comment. All right, we will bring it back to the board for directives already given. We're good to go?
Yes.
All right, we'll pull that for a later date. We're good. All right. All right.
7.5.
7.5, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Crestwood Behavioral Health Incorporated for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services for fiscal year 25-26 in the amount of $1,200,000. All right, go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Behavior, excuse me, Behavioral Health has agreed to move this item to 7/15.
Okay, move that to July 15th. Any other comments from the board? Do I need to open it up to the public, Lloyd? All right, public comment? And I'll bring it back to the board, and we will look at that item on July 15th. Go ahead.
7.7.
All right. Consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Redwood Community Services Incorporated for provision of the Lake County RAP program, foster care program, and intensive services foster care program for specialty mental health services for fiscal year 25-26 in the amount of $1,500,000.
Thank you Chair. Behavioral Health has also agreed to move this item to 7/15.
All right. Any issues with that? No, I'll open it up for public comment. None, I'll bring it back to the board. Looks like we will see that on the same date, July 15th.
7.6.
7.6, consideration of amendment number two to the agreement between County of Lake and Davis Guest Home Incorporated for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $380,000 for fiscal year 24 and 25. All right.
Hello Board, Amber Luch, Fiscal Manager for Behavioral Health. So I'm bringing this amendment to you for a review and approval. I did want to point out that there is a clerical error in the first whereas. It should say 110,000 rather than 100,000, so if you guys could approve as amended, if it is approved. Just a brief background on this contract. This contract funds adult residential support, excuse me, and specialty mental health services. These are clients that are Lake County residents that are currently conserved and require a higher level of care. Oftentimes, they're resistant to taking medication, and so that's a lot of why these clients are placed here. It provides daily residential care, meals, supervision, assistance with daily living skills and recovery planning, medication management, and just general behavioral health supports. And then, oh, there's been an average of seven clients there per month for the last fiscal year.
Questions? All right, public comment? None on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve amendment number two to the agreement between the County of Lake and Davis Guest Home Inc. for Adult Residential Support Services and Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $380,000 for fiscal year 24-25 as amended.
Second, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Then, keep going on, seven?
7.9.
All right, 7.9, consideration of A, waiving the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. B, ratifying payment in the amount of 7 million, wait, no, I'm sorry, 7,000. $7,892.37 for add order 0006900014. See approving payment to the Lake County Record B not exceeding $50,000 annually. Treasure Tax Collector, Patrick Sullivan.
All right, Patrick Sullivan, County Treasure Tax Collector. I'm bringing this item forward to your board regarding the publication requirements for our office. Throughout the Revenue and Taxation Code, there are various mandated legal publications we have to do throughout the year. They have to be published in the newspaper of record for the county, and at this time, the only newspaper of record in the county is recognized by the Superior Court, and pursuant to code is the Lake County Record B. So for the time being at least, we have no option other than to publish in the Record B. Given the nature of our purchasing ordinance, there's no exception specifically for publication, which means it does have to go to competitive bidding. Obviously, there is no way to get competitive bids in this situation, since there's only one source. So that's why I've brought this item forward. We're requesting, one, to approve the payment, to approve payment on the order that's already been placed, and then also to approve payment to Lake County Record B not to exceed 50,000 annually. I don't think we've ever actually spent more than 40,000 in a year, but it depends on the size of our publications and the list, so I'm just trying to build in some legal room there. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. I don't see any from the board, so I'll open it up for public comment. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services.
Yes, yeah, just one at a time, right? I'll have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5:00.
And I move to ratify the payment in the amount of $7,892.37 for add order 0006900014.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5:00.
Then I'll move to approve payment to the Lake County Record B for legally required publication not to exceed $50,000 annually.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5:00. All right, with that, we'll go on to 7.10, or did you need anything else on the other?
No, that's great.
All right, so then we got consideration of A, waiving the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services, approving payment of Presort Center postage deposit for $5,905.41, approving agreement with the Presort Center for printing and mailing services in an amount not to exceed $200,000. Treasure Tax Collector, Patrick Sullivan.
All right, thank you again. This is a similar issue as the last item with Record B, but admittedly, this one's a little bit more complex. The reason we're bringing this forward is primarily because of the postage situation. Again, our purchasing ordinance is restrictive rather than permissive, and there's no exception for postage. So right now, if we were to have a job, for instance, we can have a printing and mailing job that may cost $3,000, but because everything has to go out certified, it's over $50,000 in postage that goes with it. So the way our ordinance currently works, that would have to go, I mean, in that situation, would actually have to go through the entire RFP process for the print job, which for us is just not practical. We actually tried to get various quotes on the unsecured, which is unsecured, which was what you're seeing here in that agreement. Only the Presort Center actually got back to us in this scenario, but that's not really the point. That's not the reason why we're doing this. It's simply that we have to be able to go with a vendor that possesses all of these capacities, the capacity to do the printing and mailing with our data, the ability to produce the envelopes and bills that we need, and also to handle those amounts of postage. And the primary issue is postage. In that example I gave, that's the more extreme. Postage is far and away the largest amount, but even typically, postage is three to four times whatever we're spending in the print shop. So the vast majority of a transaction for us is always postage-related, and because of our scale, basically every transaction we do, even if we just want to run down to the corner print shop, triggers our purchasing process. So my position is that this is a unique situation, what we're looking for in a vendor that has all these capacities, and especially that the postage itself is not negotiable and makes up the vast majority of these transactions. So I'm asking you to find that it's not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services, so that we can move forward with getting the tax bills printed. And frankly, if we don't do it this way, this is after a year of going back and forth on various issues around the policy and trying to find a path forward. I don't really have another path forward that guarantees the tax bills going out. This is kind of the end of the line in terms of a solution. So I just want to put that out there, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I'll leave it to our tax collector to let us know we still live in the 1900s, where we do the exact same thing they probably did in 1910. I'd love to see us maybe add that to our list of lobbying to try and make some of these changes because it's costly and it keeps getting more and more expensive, and we have no process to bypass that. So my other request is look at carving out an amendment in our procurement where postage is postage, no matter what, you're going to pay what postage costs. You're not going to get it cheaper, you're not going to get it any different. And so I think that looking at a carve-out in our procurement would be good, which is why today I'm going to say yes, just because it's kind of a ridiculous thing to say no, you can't waive the formal bidding process where you're only going to get the same cost, no matter how you go about it.
All right, there's nothing else. I'll open it up for public comment. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to waive formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5:00. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
And Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve payment of Presort Center invoice number 112685 for $5,905.41.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve agreement with the Presort Center for Printing and Mailing Services in an amount not to exceed $200,000, and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Board.
Chair, would you like to try 5.12?
Yes, we can do that. We'll go ahead and open up one of our consent agenda items, 5.12. Sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, approve local cooperation agreement between Central Valley Flood Protection Board of the State of California and Lake County Watershed Protection District for Middle Creek Flood Control Project work, and authorize the Chair to sign. We have Water Resources Director Pawan Paget here.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm here because I think this item was on the consent agenda for today's meeting, and it got pulled.
There you go.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm here because we had this item on the consent agenda, but it got pulled out, so I'm here to address any questions or concern anybody might have.
Yes, please.
Board Supervisors, Pawan, Director, Water Resources, Julia Carrera, Worth Levy Subcommittee Chair. At the agreement of the Worth Chairman, I'm here to ask some questions about the Levy Pipe Rehabilitation Project. I have six questions total. The first one is, is there already an LSA in place for this project? The second one is, when will the work be done? The third one is, how will the work be done with the gravel level so high? Will the gravel be removed? Next one is, how does this impact the Caltrans Channel Clearing and Repair Project, and who in the department is following up on the work progress for that project? The fifth one is, will vegetation be removed in and around the pipes to have this work done? And six, how, and I think the most important, how, if we don't have enough money to maintain the existing levee system, are we going to pay to maintain these new pipes, which is a requirement in the agreement slated to be signed today?
Anything else?
Those are my six questions.
Okay.
Yeah, to address those questions, I think that is one of the reason why we are putting this for the board approval, because this is not under our routine maintenance. And this is from the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. So we are not funding it. It's funded by them. So they did an inspection almost a year ago, and they identified 12 culvert locations which were critical, and it's in the situation like where it's best to rehabilitate them, and that's what they are proceeding with. They just need like an agreement or approval from board to go ahead and do that work. So basically, it's not costing us anything, and it's fixing 12 culvert which are critical for the maintenance of the levees. Yeah, and this project is totally separate than the Caltrans project we have, so it has no impact on the Caltrans grant we have. It does include a little bit of gravel and vegetation removal around the culvert, but that's in very small quantity compared to the whole levees, because it's just inlet and outlet of the culvert where vegetation and gravel would be removed. Yeah, I think that probably addresses all the questions. Which one?
Can you come into the mic and say briefly?
So it says in the agreement that we have to maintain these new pipes, which costs money, and we don't have enough money to do the maintenance already, so I'm wondering, or the committee's wondering, how you're going to maintain them.
So these pipes, I'm guessing at least should be at least like 30-year-old at this point, and 20, 30-year at least. So once they are fixed, I don't think there would be any cost to that, other than, I mean, it's better for us, like if they are going ahead and replacing it. I don't know, Lynda, do you want to expand a little bit on that?
Yes, Lynda, please.
Okay, so how it works is that, actually, it's DWR who is heading up this and going to fit the bill for the 12 culverts. Right now, we're in inspection days, so we've been going around and inspecting the 12 culverts that are deemed to be, it's actually, what it is, is an aligner, and the liner goes in and they bake it in place, and it gives the life of the culvert another 15, 20 years. And so that's pretty much what we're working on. It does not affect any of our projects. We do have a sediment project coming up in later August. We're still working out the logistics to that, but this is just going to help our pipes to last. It gives it a little more life, if that's what it is.
And they're doing the work and paying for it.
They're doing the work, they're footing the bill. They're just asking us to aid them in like water, you know, providing water for them, and we got that worked out with the Upper Lake Water District, and that's pretty much.
Notification and other things.
Yep. And so, yeah, it's little maintenance for us. It's just, it's something that they have to do every five years. They'll go through all the culverts, and anything that they see is needing some repair. Right now, they're going through and they're looking at what can be aligned and what needs to be replaced. And so right now, we've seen 12, and this is what they said that they want to line, and so that's where we're at right now.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other public input or comment? I'm sorry. All right.
No, we don't have to do an LSA for this one because it's not our project, it's DWR's project. So none of those permitting things fall on us. Any of the cost, anything, we don't need to get a new LSA or anything like that. That's all on Water Resources state.
It's written in there, thanks. All right, anything else? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the board for action. And if anyone can make this, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, looks like you're in approval to move forward. So sitting as the Lake County Watershed Protection District Board of Directors, move to approve local cooperation agreement between Central Valley Flood Protection Board of the State of California and Lake County Watershed Protection District for Middle Creek Flood Control Project work, and authorize the Chair to sign.
Aye, or second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Dr. Paget and Lynda, for answering those questions.
Yes, Chair, it's time to go to 8.1, closed session.
All right, so we'll read off our 8.1. It's our 2:00 PM closed session, employee grievance complaint pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. We'll be going to close session, and we'll see you after that. Thanks.